Thank you all again for tuning in with us. Of course, this is one of many town hall meetings that we hope to host with our superintendent and our deputy chief and of course, our elected officials, none other than our distinguished gentleman Congressman Davis, Alderman Emma Mitz, who is the chairperson of the West Side Black Elected Officials. We have Alderman Jason Irvin, who's the chairperson of Public Safety, now forgive me, of the Black Caucus. Crystal LaFerrero, who's the chairman of Public Safety. And then we also have Alderman Walter Barnett. And so with that being said, I want to thank you all so very much for taking time out for this discussion as well needed. And we'd like to thank you all for your energy, your time, and ongoing commitment to the fight of bringing about social change, bridging the gap basically between the community and the police. I believe we can do this plus much, much more. And I know that's nothing that's really too hard for God if we just level on each other, give each other, and support each other. And know that all of us have a lot to do. We can bring so much together to bring about social change in our community that if we just work together, the police can't do it by itself, the community can't do it by itself. But I just know without any shadow of a doubt, if we all just come together, there's nothing too hard for God that we can do all things. And so I'm not going to take away from the prayer. I'm going to turn it over now to Elise. Elise, are you there? And if so, Elise, we would like to go ahead and turn it over to you, please.
Okay, so if everyone could bow their heads, close their eyes. Father, we thank you this evening, Lord God. We come to your throne acknowledging your mercy and your grace towards us. Father, we thank you for your grace, Lord God, to see another day. Grace, Lord God, for the full faculty of our minds. Grace, Lord God, to have the full activity of our limbs. God, we take that nod for granted. We thank you for those things. We thank you for breath. We thank you for life. God, we ask that you would govern this meeting. God, this is not a meeting to where it's an aha moment or a got you moment. This is a meeting where we're coming together, Lord God, to collaborate. We're coming together to create solutions. We're coming together for healing for our city. I pray, Lord God, that you would take that part, Lord God, and begin to just have peace over each and every mind, every heart. Even our situations, God, that you would empty out anything that would clutter the furtherance of this meeting, anything that will cause contention, that you would bring about your peace, Father. You would bring about collaboration. And, Lord God, that you would bring about solutions. I take this time, Lord God, to lift up our officers. Father, I pray that you would keep our officers safe from hurt, harm, or danger, whether it be emotionally, God, whether it be physically, whether it be, Lord God, psychologically, that you would keep them safe in every which way, Lord God, that they could be kept safe. I lift up our elected officials. God, I pray that you will continue to give them wisdom, wisdom concerning policies. God, I pray that you would give them wisdom concerning which of the exact ideas to implement and to follow and to push. Father, I pray that you would give them the right following, that you would give them the right backing, that you would give them favor in everything that they do that will call healing, cause healing for our communities. Father, I lift up our community. Father, I pray that our communities would experience the peace that we have so labored in prayer, Lord God, for them to experience. I pray, God, that you would begin to beckon unto those in the communities that have leadership ability, but they're not doing anything with it. Father, I pray that you would tap them. Tap them on their shoulders, God. Nudge their hearts so they could step up. I pray that the community would meet the police and the officers, Lord God, would meet with the judicial system, that we would all work together, Lord God, in order to see the peace that we're looking for. In Jesus' name I pray. Amen.
Thank you so much.
Amen.
Much. And please bear with us. We're trying to have, we've got a little technical difficulties with these phone, with this internet. We're trying to record and we seem to be having the problems. Well, we're going to move on down the road. We're going to call up at this time Assistant Marietta Brown Miller with the housekeeping rules and please govern yourselves accordingly. Thank you so very much, Marietta.
Good evening. I'm Moretta Brown Miller, leadership member of West Side Stakeholders. We appreciate your attendance and participation in tonight's West Side Town Hall meeting with Superintendent David Brown and the Chicago Police Department. Let's set a few ground rules before we go any further. This is a public discussion, not a debate. The purpose is not to win an argument, but to hear many points of view and explore many options and solutions. Everyone is encouraged to participate by submitting your questions and concerns in the chat. That will be monitored by Ms. Ebony, Ms. Elise, and Ms. Nikki. Please mute all electronic devices. Please mute all electronic devices. Some of you, I still see that you are not on mute. If you are not speaking, please mute your devices. Please listen to and respect other points of view and opinions. Again, please be respectful of the participants and the process. We will stick to the agenda. Thank you for adhering to the housekeeping rules and being a part of the West Side Town Hall conversation meeting. We are now ready to get started. Please mute all of your electronic devices and put all your comments and concerns in the chat. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Sister Miller. We really appreciate that. And at this time, we would like to just do one more opening to make sure that we have all of our guests. I do see that the Congressman is here, so I'm going to bring that up and after which we would turn it over to Alderman Mitz and Congressman Davis. First thing we want to do is just the Congressman, and we ask the Congressman, again, thank you, sir, for your many, many years of service and commitment to not only the West Side of Chicago, but to the United States of America. You have been such a gentleman and a mentor to so many of us, and we thank you so much, Congressman. And so Congressman, the question before we get started with the individual questions is what would you like to see accomplished at this town hall, sir?
Well, let me just say, first of all, I commend you and all of those who've been a part of the leadership of bringing us together. You really can't make it without discussion, without people having an opportunity to exchange thoughts and ideas. And the fact that you've given us this opportunity, I want to thank Superintendent of Police and the Deputy Superintendent, that is Superintendent Brown and Deputy Cato, as well as all of the other law enforcement officials who are on the call, and Walter, Reverend Walter Jones, I just say thank you for your leadership and write on.
Thank you so much, Congressman. Of course, I stand on some strong shoulders being yours, and I take pride in the work that you have petitioned that we continue to do as you've been one of our leaders. So it's not heavy lifting for us to do the work we're doing when we got leaders like yourself just showing us the way. So we thank you, Congressman. Now, we would ask Alderman Mitz, Alderman Mitz, what would you like for us to accomplish from this town hall, Alderman Mitz? Alderman Mitz, we'll come back to Alderman Mitz. She might be muted. We'll go over to Alderman Jason Irvin. We see some folks still coming in the room. Mary, are you there? Okay. Okay, Alderman Chris Teleferro. I see them on the line.
Oh, hey, you know what? I'm here. I apologize. I had to find my mouse to take it off mute. But Reverend Jones, let me, as Congressman Davis has said very clearly, thank you so much for bringing us again, once again, bringing us together, together once again as a community. I think for me overall, I think coming together as a community to see how we can work with our police department and how our police department can work with us in order to make our quality of life much better on the west side, south side of Chicago, but particularly here at home on the west side of Chicago. So I hope to walk away with a plan of action and things that we could physically do as residents of the west side to take away, to bring forth a better community that our children can grow up in, be educated in, and work in. So thank you so much for having this. And I want to thank my colleagues and all the community leaders and all that are participating in this as well.
Thank you so much, Alderman Chris Teleferro, who's also the Chair of Public Safety. I yield back to Alderman Mitz. Alderman Mitz, are you there?
Alderman Burnett is here.
Go ahead, Alderman Walter Barnett. Thank you, sir.
No problem. I'm trying to get in before they ask me to speak at this other meeting I'm on. But I just want to thank you, Reverend, for, thank you for everything you do to bring everyone together, trying to help to utilize all the resources we have, letting the police department know that we have a community that care about our community, not just folks who's anti-police. We have people who are very, very pro-police and very, and we have people who recognize that, you know, the police is part of our family too. You know, each one of these officers come from a black family. All these black officers, black superintendent, they come from, they come from people, mothers, sisters, brothers, cousins, uncles, just like the rest of us, daughters, sons. So I know that when they look at, we're very fortunate to have African-American officers in our community. And I know when they look at our kids or when they see somebody get hurt, that they think about their own family members. So I just want to say I'm grateful that we do have someone like Cato, you know, who come from the neighborhood, but also was very involved on the west side and has risen to where he is today, you know, and he's very hands-on. Matter of fact, you wouldn't believe the small meetings that he's in with me about issues in our community. I mean, and he's, you know, he's over all these officers, so we really appreciate him. And Super, I'm telling you, you got a good man right there. And also same thing with our commander from the 11th district. Both of them be right there, side by side, on the ground, whenever you call them, they're right there. So I'm grateful that you're putting this meeting together, but at the same time, we're not going to hold back the fact that we and them, we all need more help in our community to keep us safe. So thank you for having me at this meeting.
Always, always, Alderman, as you have always been really supportive of the work that we've been doing on the west side. We appreciate the work you're doing as well. We're going to try this one more time for Alderman Mitz and Alderman Jason Irvin. If not, we're going to introduce, let's try to, Alderman Mitz or Jason Irvin, are you there? Okay, we're going to go on over and we're going to ask, we're going to thank, first of all, we're going to thank our Superintendent, Superintendent David Brown and our Deputy Chief, Deputy Chief Ernest Cato. And we're going to ask you, what, sir, would you all like to accomplish from this town hall? Starting first with our Superintendent. Superintendent, thank you so much, Superintendent David Brown. We asked to have a meeting with you and you, without any forethought, said, let's make it happen. So so that you know, Superintendent, we're here to work together to create some solutions and to be working collaboratively. It's because what are you trying to accomplish, Superintendent?
Thank you, Reverend Jones, and appreciate everyone on the call taking time out of their busy evening. I really do appreciate it. I really wanted to get out of this call. Number one, to listen for what kinds of things can we be doing more of. I know Deputy Chief Cato and Glenn Brooks is on this call. We're trying to engage with the community much more. And as we come out of the pandemic, I'm wanting to come visit one-on-one with some of you and hear the concerns and take tours of the neighborhood, visit with you over coffee or lunch so that we can really establish a relationship so that I can be on point with all of the needs on the west side. Number two, I really want to talk about some of the programs involving our youth. Our young people need a lot of adult leadership guidance to make better decisions. We have put together athletic and arts programs for the summer. We're recruiting right now for kids to be a part of these athletics and art leagues. And Glenn Brooks can follow up with any of you if you have some young people that you want to get active in our police athletic and arts league that we're starting. And in addition, Chief Deputy Chief Cato, and I like the way the Congressman always have a slip of the tongue when he says Deputy Superintendent, because it's like he's in my office, going through my papers, looking at my plans for Deputy Chief Cato. Because he is one of the best deputies we have. And but Deputy Chief Cato is really connected to the community. We're looking for our deployment strategy along with our community engagement to continue to grow and be better, more respectful. And when officers do step out of line, we want to be the first to hold them accountable. We don't want you to have to endure long periods of time of officers not being respectful toward the community. So I'm wanting to just listen for all of that conversation, but I'm really attuned to what we can do together with our young people. I really have a heart for the young people of color, particularly young black men, trying to get them on the right road. If they made bad decisions, let's not cast them away. Let's try to figure out a way to get them back on the right road. So I'll shut up and listen, Reverend, for the rest of the meeting.
Again, thank you so much, Superintendent. It's always a pleasure to have you in and around. And we can personally be with, if I were to bring up, I'm going to introduce to some and present to others, in my opinion, in my opinion, the best Deputy Chief that I know in the city of Chicago. And I have to just be frank, none other than Deputy Chief Ernest Cato. Deputy Chief, what would you like to see accomplished before we open up with these questions?
Well, Reverend Jones, I say the beauty of working for Superintendent Brown is that he and I think about the same, about the same things. And he clearly said what I was thinking also when it comes about engaging with our youth. But I tell you, we've already started just by having this meeting tonight. You've already set the pace about collaborating and working together. And I tell you, one thing about solving a lot of our issues out here is continuing talk, to have dialogue, whether or not we want to hear it or not, but to speak the truth. If we speak the truths and stay transparent, you will see a lot of success. But I tell you, the biggest thing of our issues right now are our kids, from carjacking to homelessness, to lack of hope and resources. If we can find those things for our children, we'll be okay. But I would love to see a plan come out of this on how.
Well, that's what we're here for, Deputy Chief. We're here to work together. And I think it's enough of us running about, who come together and collaborate under your leadership as well as the Superintendent. And I distinguish Congressman to make what we need to happen on this west side possible. I have no doubt in my mind that we equipped and able to do that. So thank you so much. Again, I'm trying to wait on Alderman Mitz to come in. If not, we're going to turn it over to our Congressman, who has several meetings going on at the same time. But we wanted to give Alderman, Alderman Mitz the respect and Jason Irvin. So are they, are Marietta, is the Alderman here? Congressman, we got to move on down the road. When the Alderman comes in, we'll bring him in. But in the meantime, Congressman, we have here a different question that we handed to you as well as to the police department. And we'd like to start off with question one, Congressman. Would you present question one on the consent decree and accountability, sir?
I don't think I have it, so.
I'll read it for you.
Go right ahead.
Okay, sir. The question number one, Congressman, is can, can, how can, okay, can you advise House, listen to the Superintendent, please. Can you advise House CPD, the Chicago Police Department, holding their officers accountable to the consent decree and other forms of reform policies? I.e. provide a description of the consent decree and how officers reprimand it when they don't comply with the consent decree. This question is to, to the Superintendent and his designate.
I'll, I'll take that question if you don't mind, Reverend Jones. So the consent decree is in its fourth reporting period. There are two pieces to the consent decree. The first and the largest piece are what's called paragraphs. There are 799 paragraphs that describe things CPD should do to come into compliance with the consent decree. So think about the consent decree in two pieces. The biggest piece is the 799 paragraphs. The second piece is a smaller piece. It's less than 150 deadlines, and the deadlines are attached to the paragraph. So there's paragraphs that have to come into compliance with it. Most of it is policies and training. Now, we got a slow start before I got on the job. Our first two reporting periods, we didn't have significant percentages of compliance on the paragraphs, nor did we meet significant percentages of the deadline. So when I came in, we were in reporting period number three. Reporting period number three, we had a lot of catching up to do with the first two reporting periods, and we had to try to stay on track with the third reporting period. At the end of June 30th ends the fourth reporting period, and we are making significant progress. An example would be we have put out more than 111 policies as it relates to the paragraphs I meant. In addition, as you know, we have a new search warrant policy. In the next couple of days, we'll have a new foot pursuit policy. And both those policies require significant training associated with it. And lastly, speaking of training, for the first time in Chicago Police Department's history, we have a minimum requirement of hours for every officer to complete annually for training. Last year, it was 32 hours for every officer annually. This year, it'll be 40 hours annually for training. So there's a lot more to come. We've only gone through about 313 of the 799 paragraphs that are required to complete, but we're making significant progress. But part of the slow start was, you know, before I started, we just got so far behind, and now we're getting caught up in proceeding forward. Finally, holding officers accountable. That is part of the consent decree, but it's mostly as it relates to misconduct that either COPA investigates or our Bureau of Internal Affairs investigates. The Superintendent makes recommendations to the Police Board, but the Police Board, for the most part, has final decision on termination and significant suspensions for officer. All the minor discipline I have the purview of and can either spar an officer for minimal violations or suspend them for minimal, but it's terminating an officer or suspending him for a year or more, that's going to the Police Board for a final decision. That's a lot, but I was trying to cover everything.
Well, thank you so much, Superintendent. We're going to yield back to the Congressman for this. Congressman, you heard the question, you heard the response, the Superintendent.
Well, I did indeed, and I commend the Superintendent in terms of the preciseness of describing the action and the activities that have occurred. We know that change is not always easy to come about, but I always say, if you want to go south, the first thing you do is turn and face that direction. Then every time you take a step, you get a little bit closer to 95th Street. But if you're heading up north or you're going around in circles, you'll never get to Evanston. So let me just commend them for following through, following up, following the protocols that have been established.
Thank you, Congressman. We're going to ask again, if you all are not speaking, please give our Superintendent, our Congressman, and all of our guests who are here a fund to hear this decision. Please mute from, those are the rules that we're requiring today. We get Alderman Jason Irvin came on. Thank you so much. We were just going through the first question decree. If you have questions, please acknowledge that by putting it into the checkbox and have anybody in there who will bring the question back. But right now, we have a buzz of a speaking going on, so please. Just want you to know that we introduced you, sir, and we'd like for you, Alderman Irvin, to let us know what you'd like to accomplish in this meeting. And then we're going to have, after you, we will have Alderman Chris Teleferro, who will give us question two on what collaborative strategies and efforts that the Chicago Police Department is currently pursuing. Alderman Irvin, are you there, sir?
Yes, sir. Number one, thank you for the invitation this evening. Welcome to Superintendent Brown and members of his team and executive team and area leadership for the west side of Chicago. I see our commanders are on as well. Just want to thank them for their participation, also my colleagues, so Natalia Ferro and also Congressman Danny Davis. At the end of the day, our desire on the west side is that we have a police force that is responsive to the needs of the citizens here on the west side of Chicago. While you may hear a lot of conversation about a bunch of different things, I can tell you that many of our residents are, I won't call it to the point of being upset, but are at a point of just dismay of the, what the activity of our, of our officers. And what I say in that is that we have to find a way to do effective constitutional policing in a manner that respects the rights of the accused as well as protects the citizens of our great city, especially of our residents here in the 10th, 11th, and 15th districts. And if anything, I want for us to come out of this with is a plan as to how we will execute that very item. I've had conversations with the Superintendent's, with Superintendent and our Deputy Chief, and they know where I'm at with this issue. They know where my residents are with this issue. We've had advisory referendum votes about what we would like to see. So there's no question about where the people are. We just need the police department to catch up with us. So thank you.
Well, thank you again, Alderman Irvin. You know, we have not, we have not typazidly conducted this town hall. We got the input from our elected officials, the Congressman, Alderman Mitz, Alderman, yourself, Alderman Irvin, Chris Teleferro, and Alderman Walter Barnett. Make sure that this community is properly being addressed with also the involvement of the community. So I'm going to try this again. Alderman Mitz, are you there? If you do, if you are, please let us know. In the meantime, I'm going to go to question number two, and we're going to yield to Alderman Chris Teleferro, who's the Chairman of Public Safety for the city of Chicago. Alderman Teleferro, do you have a question, sir?
I had to take it off mute again. I didn't want to get scolded by Moretta.
We'll do it.
Love you, Moretta. But you know, I think, I think that's a very important question. You know, how can we collaborate with the police department to build a better relationship between our police department and our community? And what I'd like to liken it to Reverend Jones is, is a marriage. You know, most marriages that are long-distance marriages or either long-distance dating relationship, oftentimes they fail because of the distance that's between them. Whether one's in another country or another state, when you have a relationship that there's a lot of distance in between, they're very difficult to maintain, and oftentimes they're severed. But when you have a relationship that's, that's close or marriage that's close because you're because the two are constantly engaged and communicating, that serves for a better relationship. Now, now what we can do as a, as a community and as a police department in helping to foster.
Excuse me, Alderman Teleferro, but will you, whoever has their electronic device unmuted, please mute it. Thank you.
Told you.
I'm sorry, continue.
Ms. Brown Miller is on it. One of the things that we can do is to use what, use the tools of what we already have available to help build that relationship. I know the police department has made tremendous efforts over the past couple of years, and specifically those that have come into fruition over the last couple of years, like the DCO program. For those of you that don't know what it is. For those of you that don't know what it is, it's the District Coordinating Officers Program, whereby they are engaged with the community very much on the level of what we saw CAPS, Community Chicago Alternative Policing Strategy, come about in the early nineties and mid nineties. Our district coordinating coordination officers are put together to provide a resource for our constituents and our citizens to engage with police to help solve some of the problems that may be of a nuisance base or just may be on their block. And so I look at some of the other programs that we have with our block clubs. These are things that we can continue to utilize and bring the police out to, to help facilitate that relationship, to help facilitate a better relationship, ensuring that we're going to our CAPS meetings. So we already have a lot of tools in place or some tools in place. It's better, I think it's just that we have the better access those tools and better utilize those tools in order to foster a better relationship. I started a program in the Twenty Ninth Ward called the Lawn Chair Program, where as an Alderman, I go with you, I sit in your backyard with you on the block, and we might have some hot dogs on the grill or whatever it might be. But we sit in the background in the backyard and we talk about what's going on on the block or what's going on in the community that we can do to make it a better place to live. So we can come up with different tools and different things that we could do to help foster better relationships between the police and the community, but we have to utilize. You know, unfortunately, we'll go to a beat meeting and there's only three or four people there, or the DCO program is not being utilized very well in the district, or there are no block clubs on your block. So I think we got to not just put the efforts and put the onus on the police, but we also have to make sure that we, as a community, are using every tool that we have available to us to help strengthen that relationship, because it's going to eventually build a better community for all of us to live in and a better neighborhood as well.
Thank you, Alderman. So we're going to push this question a little further to the superintendent. Oh, is that, doesn't it? Superintendent, what is our collaborative, meaning the CPD and community strategy in brown communities to reduce crime outside of the use of pod cameras, shot spotters, and other surveillance technology?
Thank you, Reverend Jones. Thank you, I appreciate it. I'm going to start this answer off, and I'm going to kick it to Glenn Brooks, who's the director of our community, Office of Community Policing. We coordinate with a lot of services within the City of Chicago, and we also work with other nonprofits. Particularly, an example would be this past weekend, we had street outreach, we had violence interrupters, we had BACP, we had other city services out on the ground in the eleven districts to address concerns earlier in the day before things got out of hand in the evening. And we are obviously engaging the community with flyers related to crimes. We're doing work with our young people, recruiting, like I mentioned, we're recruiting right now for summer programming with our Police Athletic League and our Police Arts League and more. So Glenn, why don't you pick up the rest of this and just really talk about what we're doing? And same thing, Ernie, if you just jump in as well with beyond just the traditional policing with pod cameras and the like, what else are we doing with the community besides what I mentioned?
Thank you so much, Superintendent, and thank you, Alderman Chris Teleferro. We yield now to Director Brooks, please.
Thank you, Pastor Jones. So a couple of things, y'all are so lucky over there. Not only have you had Cato as a deputy chief, but you also had him as a commander, but you've been fortunate, y'all have been really blessed. Not only that, you got McKenzie over there, you have Wines over there, and you also have Gil Caloron over in Tenth District, so the West Side as well, taken care of. But there's some unique things that, you know, everyone has called know that's been done, whether it's out in Austin, working with the run, whether it's getting the collaborative together. Right now, a lot of our focus is going to be in the zones. You know, one of our plans this summer, we're working with the mayor's office, they've identified
Chief, if you broke up for a minute, Deputy Chief, you broke up, can you repeat that? You kind of broke up just a tad.
Okay, I'm sorry, can you hear me here?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Right now, this summer, we're going to be concentrating in two zones on the West Side, and it's a total, I believe, of seven beats, where we'll be looking at, to Alderman Teleferro's point, to re-energizing and organizing those communities around some of the things that have been happening in the community, but more importantly, bringing additional resources from other city agencies. I know Alderman Irving has had an opportunity to sit on some of those calls and given great direction. It's not just about us talking about doing activity, but it's really focusing on the needs of the community. I know the Garfield prohibitive along the Pulaski Avenue corridor, we're doing a lot there this summer. They're looking at not only expanding the, to a possible skating rink, but really working with our city departments to bring vaccines to the neighborhood, which will begin next weekend on the twenty eighth. We're working with Pastor Edie over there and making sure that we really support the business corridors this summer and really help them recover from this last devastating year of COVID, along with, you know, the civil unrest and really take the West Side to that next level. I know the deputy is dying to get in here with some of the things that he has going on with some of the sports programs that he has, but I don't want to forget about the hidden treasures you do have over there. Both Tim Brown and Velda, who've been working on the West Side for the last ten, fifteen years, are a resource which can help take this, the strategies developed tonight to that next level. But I want to give it over to Deputy Chief Cato.
Thank you, Director Brooks. Deputy Chief Cato, please.
Yeah, thank you, Director Brooks. You know, the Alderman said something, Alderman Teleferro said something really important about meetings. Now that the weather is breaking and the city is starting to open up, we want in Area Four, we'll be looking to host our meetings outdoors. We want to take it to the streets, something that we did in the Fifteenth District. I've learned that meetings, how folks come to meetings, you get ten, you get six, sometimes you may get two, but when you take it to the streets, you get twenty or more. And they're going to be covert later, we're going to go directly to our violent areas, the most violent blocks, the most violent areas. And we're going to set those block club meetings right there, right on the street, and we're going to have open discussion about what's going on in the community. And we're going to see a difference in there. Another thing about working together, we want to involve the community and the strategies of how we can actually reduce violence. One way that we've been doing that now, the superintendent spoke about it, working with our outreach workers, clearly coming up with strategies and planning together and going to those most violent areas has been effective. And an additional thing is just transparency, transparency with all of us. All of us taking some form of responsibility about what's going on in the community. One, starting right here, right now, with Reverend Walter Jones wanting to put this town hall meeting together and clearly talk about the issues. And I think we all owe it to ourselves to be honest about what's going on within our communities. And one of it is that all of us have to have skin in this game. All of us have to have skin in the game. And then I do appreciate you, one of you, for being here, but the most productive things that I see is taking it directly to where it's happening at and addressing it. So you will see more outdoor meetings to come.
And so we do commend Deputy Chief and Superintendent. We do have the chat room open for folks to bring in questions. We will be entertaining their questions shortly, but we want to give you all the opportunity to hear what's on your heart and what on your spirit. And I apologize for being redundant, but I will have to be respectful to just inquire one more time if Alderman Mitz is here. We know she's on vacation or out somewhere, but we're hoping that she does. Alderman Irvin, are you ready, sir? Alderman Irvin? Alderman Irvin, can you unmute yourself, please, sir?
I apologize, I had to excuse me, I'm a little under the weather today, but go ahead.
Okay, your question, Alderman Irvin, is to the superintendent. We know that CPD and the community are working together to build and strengthen our relationships to address public safety and public health concerns. Can you speak, Teleferro and Alderman Irvin, can you speak to the issue that we see needs, needs immediate intervention in our community? For example, shortage of black officers and promotion of officers of colors in our community, hiring black officers and promoting black officers in the community or officers of color?
Well, right now, we're in the process of awaiting a report from the Inspector General on this very question. When you go to these graduations for our police officers, what used to be a class of twenty or thirty percent African American is now dipping below ten percent. And what we need to understand is why is that? We asked Inspector General to look in that to find out where are our young people falling out of this process so that we can put the corrective measures in so that we can see more young officers in our community that look like the people that served in the community. So that's point number one. We definitely must engage in a strategy that not only brings viable recruits to the table, but helps retain them. It does us no good to go out and recruit ten thousand young people to only end up with two or three hundred that make it through the academy and subsequently become full-time police officers. So that's a critical point that we are actually researching, working with the Inspector General's Office Public Safety Division on trying to understand. That's one thing that we have to be concerned about. Number two, we talk about health challenges. The opioid epidemic is nothing new to us. We've been dealing with this for the last forty years on the West Side of Chicago. It's just new to some other people that just found out their kids is hooked on this stuff. So now it's an opioid epidemic, and now we're starting to see additional resources come to the community. I'll tell you something, when I was in a room, it was about two years ago, with the president of the DuPage County Board of Commissioners asking what he can do to help, I knew then that this is something that just wasn't a mainstream West Side issue. This had crossed boundaries and beginning to affect other communities, other families, and therefore brought a little, another level of resources to the table. I'm happy to say that we've been seeing engagement, especially in the Eleventh District and what we call the Heroin Highway corridor, pretty much stretching from the blue line to the green line between Hamlin all the way down to Cicero, that we're seeing additional resources to help people that are addicted to drugs, as well as additional enforcement from the police department, providing that social service aspect. The Legla Library, which has just been recently redone and opened, now has social service workers in there trying to help people on a, on a pretty much a daily basis with those particular needs. And we've seen more outreach work from our homeless, as well as our public health professionals in that Pulaski corridor. So working with the police department, they've done tremendous work to not only bring attention to the issue, but also bring additional resources to the table while they have enforcement to do, and they've also worked with us to bring the public health resources to the table as well.
Well, thanks so much, Alderman. We knew that you would give us a real robust conversation and findings on what's going on, because you're always out here. And so we want to yield now to the superintendent to address that question specifically, what we're working together to strengthen relations, can we do to address the immediate need that we see in our community, which is folks like us, from us, people of color policing us in our community and promotions for officers of color in our community who has a passion or may have a history of living in the community, Superintendent?
Yeah, I just want to start out with diversity is more important now than it's ever been in policing. If we're going to reform policing, it's going to be through diversity, having black officers, other officers of color, much more than we have in the past. The encouraging news, even though what Alderman Irvin mentioned about the low numbers that's graduating from the pipeline from what is a year ago, because the academy is six months long, is that our recent application period yielded sixty percent of our applicants, both black and brown applicants. So both Hispanic and brown were sixty percent of the April ninth application period. We're doing a couple of things. We're taking a strong look at whether or not the actual first test is something that is kind of knocking people of color out when it's not a critical test process. It's just an opening to whether or not you go to the next step instead of a pass fail. We're looking at that very strongly. In addition, we're looking at leaving our testing period open for much longer periods. So we'll have three more testing periods this year. And finally, I've asked HR to have what's called an onsite testing. Our testing process takes so long, people looking for a job move on to the person that will hire them the soonest. And so to have an onsite testing, you have more than just the application, you have the physical fitness test and other tests so that a person, when they leave, know whether or not they're going to the next step and being considered seriously instead of waiting months and months before each piece of the test is done. So our goal is to try and get three more application periods this year. We're looking for one in June, one in August, and one in November. It is a difficult time to recruit in law enforcement. Many young people, both young people of color and others, are not choosing the police profession, so we are forming a dedicated recruiting team that's representative of the applicant that we want to recruit. So a lot of black officers, a lot of brown officers are part of that recruiting team that their full-time job is to go to colleges, university, and military bases and job fairs to be on the ground and the face of the department, asking people of color to apply to be a Chicago police officer. And we want to really emphasize Chicago Public Schools, people who've attended Chicago Public Schools being a primary source of our applicants. So I'm a big believer in diversity, and I think diversity is going to be the way we reform and change the culture.
Reverend Jones, if I can just add, I added the link in the chat. So anybody who's interested, they can go to the link and sign up right now.
Okay, you heard, you heard, Director Brooks, can you repeat that, please, sir?
I added the link to the chat. Anybody who's interested in next testing period can go ahead, click that and sign up for that, please. We urge everybody from the neighborhood, if we want people to look like us, they got to come from the neighborhood that we're at. So please, please, please circulate it amongst your neighbors.
Well, with that being said, Director Brooks, you're kind of breaking up or whatever. We did get the comment from the superintendent, but if you don't mind right now, sir, we'd like to open it up to the community for community comments. Please put your comments in the chat room, and either Elise and/or Ebony or Nikki will be responding to questions in the chat room. Elise, Ebony, are you all there?
I am here. Yes, I'm here.
Okay, ladies, can you start off with some of the questions of the chat room, please?
Sure, I'll go with the first question. The first question is, I would like to know if you use street and sand trucks to prevent crime and looting on business trips? Why didn't you see those trucks? Why didn't you use those trucks to help shut down the drug strips for a week or two at a time?
Superintendent, did you hear that?
I did. I'm going to have Chief Cato answer where we did that at, and maybe you didn't see it, but we did do that for the West Side and the South Side, by the way, several times. We can always do more of it, and likely we put it in areas where you didn't see it. Ernie, you want to just talk about where we put those sand trucks?
Can you hear me?
We can. Deputy Chief Cato, just to be clear, they were saying more so in neighborhoods and not just the strips. So in neighborhoods that are labeled as a hotspot.
Well, when we did place the salt trucks, they were placed in areas of the business corridor, but we did place them in areas where we thought it would slow down the narcotics trade also. Some trucks on the West Side of Chicago, specifically in the area of Madison and Pulaski, we have a narcotics area off the area of Springfield and Madison. We had a salt truck in that area also. So not only did it deter those who wanted to cause issues in the businesses, it could also cause those who wanted to drive in the area to slow their ability to navigate into those areas where narcotics could be sold at. We also placed those trucks in the area of Pulaski and Gladys. Then we looked over into the We also placed those trucks in the area of Pulaski and Gladys. And then we looked over into the the fifteenth district area, we placed them in the area of Chicago Avenue, Chicago Avenue and Laramie, specifically in the area of Leamington, Leamington and Chicago Avenue. We have, uh, issues over there. So when they were placed, the goal was twofold, to slow down the the ability to cause areas in it in a business district, but also it the those who were purchasing narcotics had to navigate around those, specifically in the area of Madison and Leamington, where we placed them in the fifteenth district. So when we placed them in the area, four, our goal was twofold, to slow down issues in the business district and the narcotics issues. But we can look to place them deeper into the neighborhoods, but we don't want to cause the residents in those areas issues either.
Okay, um, next question. Why haven't the neighborhood drug spots been given the same all-day officer saturation like you did while trying to make sure the looting happen did not happen on business trips the week following President, the presidential election?
Can I take that one real quick?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we 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 did it. Again, maybe the person asking the question didn't see it, but Ernie, go ahead and, uh, talk about what we did here.
Yeah, we went down and talked what we do, what we're doing right this present time. If you walk around in some areas right now during our Memorial Day plan, our concern is not necessarily just looting or or civil unrest. Our concern are the neighborhoods. You see multiple officers walking at this point, probably six each through the neighborhoods, through our narcotics areas. Specifically, right now, we have them on Augusta. We have them, uh, walking down Costner. We have them walking up and down Madison. So again, our goal is to give high visibility, but we want to put that high visibility where we're starting to have our violence in our narcotics area.
Okay, great. Elise, would you like to go next?
Um, the question in which I had you just asked that question about streets and sands, I did have um, a question here is I'm concerned, I'm a concerned parent. Um, what can CPD, uh, CPD do, uh, to make sure that our kids are safe? Um, and being taken, wait, sorry. My apologies, this is trying to go up on one. I am a concerned parent. What can CPD do to make sure that our kids are safe and are, um, being taken care of and not taken over by drug dealers in parks and in their community?
Yeah, I I my, uh, commander over community police and Angel Navalis is in charge of programs we're trying to recruit for for our kids so that we could do that very thing. Angel, you want, do you mind, uh, just stepping up and answering this one?
Hi, how you doing? Sorry, let me get, I'm gonna jump on question.
Joe, thank you, Superintendent. So the question was, what can, what can CPS do to make our parks safe for our children to play?
Hi, so this is, this is Commander Navalis. Um, so one of the things that we're doing is as we roll out the PALS program, we are having our youth liaison officers recruit youth in areas that are seeing the highest concentrations of violence. What we want to do is enroll the kids in the PALS program so we can remove them from that area to a local park where we can steer it much better, where we can engage them in sports. Not only are we engaging them in sports, but we are also, uh, engaging them in a mentorship program. We want the kids to know that there are opportunities within the sport that aren't necessarily working with the sport. Also, if you feel that you want to get your child involved, please go to your local CAPS office. The eleventh district has a phenomenal, uh, explorers program. So does the fifteenth district and the tenth district. Also, if you feel like your kids are having an issue, whether in the schools or with the kids in the neighborhood, engage the DCOs. The DCOs will work with the families to try to mitigate those issues so our kids are safer.
Okay, great.
Well, I I guess I just have to say this before you go, uh, uh, Ebony. There are, uh, just so you know, Superintendent, we have five, eleven, fifteen, and twenty-fifth districts. And we have found, uh, uh, some excellent explorer programs in all of those districts. And we have, under the leadership of, of course, Deputy Chief Kato and us, we have brought all of those districts together to do a collaborative event in the communities to bring all folks together in our communities, and it worked quite well. And we just wanted to let you know, sir, that we have been pursuing those areas to make sure that we keep our young folks safe because if they safe in the community, in the park, they won't have to be on the street. But anyway, I yield back to the questions from our, uh, from, uh, Ebony and, uh, Elise, please.
All right, thank you, brother. Out of seven hundred paragraphs in a consent decree, is there anything that mandates police officers to participate in mental health assessments, participate in group counseling sessions, sessions, monthly, quarterly, et cetera?
Uh, the answer is yes. There's a significant portion of the paragraphs that require an officer support system. Uh, we, uh, in addition to, uh, that baseline, we're coming up with uh, policies and programs to comply with that part of the consent decree. We also have expanded our peer support, uh, number of officers and our clinicians, our experts in treating officers who might be experiencing uh, any kind of mental health, mental, uh, uh, wellness issues. Lastly, I recently hired a subject matter expert, Alexa James, from a mental health organization to come in and be kind of a senior advisor to me on policies and programs, uh, that we could be expanding beyond what the consent decree does. So we're likely will have even more programming for our officers. Uh, our, uh, uh, strategic plan includes officer wellness as a major pillar, uh, much of about, about changing the culture, reforming, the officers have to be emotionally and physically well to do it uh, in the way we expect them to treat people. So that's really an important aspect of reform. So yes, it's in the consent decree, but we want to do above and beyond what the consent decree requires as it relates to officer wellness. Very good question.
All right, and thank you so much, Superintendent. Next question. With the shot spotters, how effective are they with catching the criminal after a shooting?
It's it's very effective. Um, unfortunately, very dangerous. Uh, as officers are responding, uh, to these shot spotter calls, likely confronting people who are armed with a weapon and not afraid to use it, uh, and use it on officers. So it's a very dangerous call. It is very effective. It's a tool. It's a something that we use to likely build a case to charge someone with a crime. Uh, but the main aspect of shot spotter is that when we're responding to shot spotter, we're taking guns off the street that do harm, uh, to the community.
Okay, thank you. Next question. Well, it is a lot of emphasis on, put on violence interrupters. What about advocacy?
I think we need it all. Uh, if if I were to describe our, uh, outreach, interrupters, and advocates, I would say it's in its infancy right now. Uh, I think more mature, uh, advocacies and, uh, interrupters and outreach will yield a significant outcome, uh, that improves, uh, violence, that reduces violence. But we're, we're really just getting started here in Chicago. It's just a few years. Uh, the capacity is not there right now, you know. Deputy Chief Kato would say, you know, if we just had more of them, we had them uh, around the clock later into the early morning hours, we would likely see better outcomes. But, you know, it's, it's, it's effective, uh, when they're on the ground. And Ernie, I don't know if you want to expand on outreach and advocacy uh, and interrupters in their role right now.
Yeah. I do agree with the suit. We do need more. Uh, I actually deal with them quite often, and I agree with the soup. If we had more, we can place them into issue, we could actually place them in areas where we can have less confrontation with the police. Uh, when we have large, large gatherings in certain areas, I've found the outreach workers have the ability to go in there and calm a situation down and just actually have folks start moving around instead of the police moving right into those large crowds, which sometimes become, becomes an issue. Uh, the relationships that I've built with them has been been effective. I actually saw two years of reductions in the fifteenth district by actually, uh, working with those groups. Uh, I think we need more. I think we need more. I think we need different types of community, uh, outreach workers also who actually come from the communities to be more involved. But it's a, it's a tool that's growing. It's a tool that's growing throughout the country.
All right, thank you so much, Deputy. Um, Elise, you can go ahead now.
Okay, so, um, there's a question here that talks about, um, the consent decree and having the cultural sensitivity training. So, uh, that's related to, you know, all races. And they wanted to know also if we are placing some importance on putting officers of the same race in those neighborhoods, so black neighbors, uh, black, black officers in black neighborhoods.
That's a little bit more challenging because nine-one-one calls, uh, obviously have a sense of urgency. Uh, we assign officers through, uh, their graduation from the academy, but once they're veteran officers, they bid for their assignments and it's contract, labor contract protected, uh, bidding. And so to be able to uh, do that by race would be much more challenging. I mean, I think the overarching answer to that question is we just need to hire more diverse applicants, get them through our academy and get them assigned. And we need to be, uh, continuing to push diversity uh, with promotions as well. I think that's the overarching answer. Uh, not necessarily, uh, trying to pick and choose which officers, uh, respond to which calls. It that just be uh, so complex that you wouldn't end up, uh, achieving or accomplishing much. Uh, the answer is hiring a diverse workforce, uh, and promoting diverse supervision.
Okay, and I'll just reiterate that first part about cultural training. Um, is that somewhere in the consent decree where we're actually training people to treat everyone with the same respect?
Yes, there's an, uh, implicit bias training as well as procedural justice training that speaks to those very issues. Uh, there's been several iterations of both procedural justice and implicit bias training that's been in our po- our training, uh, plan for, uh, many months. Uh, as we proceed with the consent decree, that's, that becomes more operational where, uh, the training is done at the district level as well as, as part of the officer's annual training. Uh, so that, uh, it is, um, building muscle memory where that becomes the default uh, procedure that we follow respecting the, a diverse community in Chicago.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay.
Um, so the next Oh, sorry, Ebony, you want to go ahead?
Go ahead, I'll go to you, go ahead.
Okay, so the next question that I wanted to ask is that, um, we've got, you know, we've got to get the students and the parents involved in these conversations. So is there a plan, some sort of way that we could sort of get the students and the parents in the conversations for our solutions in our communities?
So, you know, school being out for such a long time created this significant challenge uh, dealing with our young people. You know, teachers and principals are mentors to our young people. They know how to influence their behavior. Um, police officers, uh, try their best, but they're, they're just not as influential on student behavior as the teachers and principals are. We've actually, uh, collaborated with CPS, uh, several different uh, things to help us engage young people with better behavior. One of the things that's happened recently is you know, a lot of young people want to go downtown and and enjoy downtown like anyone else. Uh, and we've asked, uh, you know, CPS to, uh, come downtown and be a part of making sure the young people do it in a safe manner. And they did that over this past weekend. Of course, there's a few bad apples in every bunch, but for the most part, that's working. Uh, we've had to make a few arrests, but it's been several hundred kids downtown, uh, mostly from the south and west sides that's, uh, you know, not been arrested. Uh, I think we arrested nine over the weekend out of several hundred that were down there. It's always a few bad apples in the bunch. Uh, but for the most part, uh, CPS has stepped up and they collaborated with us. We want to see more of that, particularly this summer. And 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 as school opens back up in the fall, we are uh, looking for any and all help with these kids. So any volunteers on this call, please, we'll put you to work uh, with, uh, young people, either coaching, mentoring, helping us when they go downtown. Uh, if any church has any programs for young people, we would love to point them in that direction as well. Uh, but they just need something to do. Uh, they need some constructive guidance from, uh, adults.
So Superintendent, you think maybe, uh, I saw that the Superintendent, if I can take a liberty, uh, the super, uh, not the Superintendent, but the Deputy Chief had brought together when this, with this influx of carjacking uh, in the districts, uh, particularly eleven fifteen and so. And the Deputy Chief brought the principals together and brought the group, the community, and the principals together. And we actually marched on all of these hotspots in the neighborhood. And and we was actually, uh, standing on these different hotspots, and everybody was, was loving on each other, supporting each other, playing music and committing to taking back our streets. If we can continue to do some activities like that, uh, according to what we we saw the Deputy Chief implementing with the principals of the schools, even in spite of the pandemic, uh, we were still out there in spite of that. Um, can, 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 can you think that would be something that you would support, continue to support with our Deputy Chief?
Yes, and yes. In addition, that I gave Deputy Chief Kato a project called Custom Notifications where Deputy Chief Kato puts together a team of social services that goes door to door to the homes of young people and offer them and their family services. And so Deputy Chief Kato is, is, is on point. If he had her, he'd be great. I tell you that right now because we, we put him to work. Uh, and he's always on point. He's always on point.
Thank you, sir. Back to the questions, please.
Okay, next question. The homeless camps in Ward twenty-eight and twenty-five are becoming a public safety issue as crimes are being committed against them and by them. But police are hesitant to deal with them due to legal protection, rightfully so. We do want homeless protected. But when the camps are closed to schools and residents, what can be done?
I don't know, Ernie, if you want to take that one, or Angel, you want to talk about the homeless liaisons? Uh, either one of you. Ernie, you want to go first and then we'll kick it to Angel on the, on the homeless liaisons?
Hi, uh, Deputy Chief Kato, if you want to go first, if not, I'll step in and I will address, can you hear me? And I'll address. So here at the Office of Community Policing, what we did is in our Civil Rights Unit, we added a homeless liaison, someone who is going to be responsible for gathering resources in the area where these incidents are occurring to do whatever they can to, one, to ensure that there is, is food for them, to ensure that there's care, and then to try to find some sort of placement. Also, in every district, we are putting what's called an affinity officer. An affinity officer is to look at what in the community has a need, what group in the community has a need. And if it is the homeless, they are to work directly on the ground and work with our liaison in our Civil Rights Unit to attempt to alleviate that by providing resources to help folks out of it. Uh, so what we see out there is that people need just a little nudge, and we created those positions for the purpose of attempting to address issues such as those. Deputy Chief Kato, I turn it over to you.
Well, you know, I just want to go back to a homeless camp they had in Garfield Park. While working with, uh, Alderman Irving, we saw last year in Garfield Park, they had about twenty to thirty camps. Uh, working with Alderman Irving, we worked with DFSS, we immediately addressed it by utilizing DFSS, and we walked in probably every other week, then we kicked it up multiple. To find the homeless, homeless folks, some type of resources. At this point, Garfield Park is not having that issue. At the same time, walk, working with, uh, Reverend Jones, Reverend Jones is also now looking into the homeless and we're trying to assist him with resources. He start working in the area of Kedzie and Chicago Avenue. So the majority of time, this is going to be a collaboration of not only multiple city organizations, but also private organizations and religious organizations. And if we do it as a team, we can start addressing a lot of those issues.
Well, Deputy Chief, you do have the group of of folks who are a part of this west side community, stakeholders who have been feverishly working out on these homeless sites in October, November, December, January, February, March, and April. And so we just rested for, uh, for, uh, May to get your leadership on where, when you would like us to go next. So we're still waiting on you to tell us where you want us to go, and we going when you tell us, all right?
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Elise, you're up.
Okay, so, um, there used to be an officer friendly, um, you know, in our community from CPD. What positive efforts are CPD doing to strengthen community and especially community trust to produce positive community outcomes?
I I'll take part of that. I've really placed a lot of emphasis on our officers interacting with young people. And and the younger the better in positive ways, along with other, uh, parts of the community with with our And, and the younger the better in positive ways, along with other, uh, parts of the community with, with our seniors, uh, and many of our underserved communities. We've really placed a lot of emphasis on that. But I just wanted to highlight, if we're going to build trust, it's going to likely start with building trust with our young people. Uh, and, and, and our hopes are that the, the families of the young people appreciated and we get to build trust with the whole family. Because we're focused on, uh, you know, helping the young person find their way, uh, make better decisions, uh, discover their talents, mentor, uh, their decisions. Uh, you know, of course, the area four, the West Side area is focused on all of this. And they can talk more specifically about it. Deputy Chief Cato?
You know, about a year or so ago, uh, working with, I have, I have, I have a very strong sergeant by the name of Sergeant Jermaine Harris, who's really focused on our youth. And he helped come up with the program of the West Side, uh, West Side Sporting Program. And it's basically started with the baseball. And what's huge about that, it's not just only police officers that has evolved. You can see, I'm going to continue to talk about collaboration. At each baseball game, there's resources for the youth and their families. We start with, uh, health, we're starting with, with food, uh, employment opportunities, and we're bringing them all to the table. And he's, he also did it with basketball. And, and I think that as long as we focus when it comes to our youth and give them some of the resources that they need, we'll see a decrease in crime. A lot of things that's going on right now with our youth is because they don't have, they don't have anywhere to go or anything to do. But the goal is to find folks like yourself to come out and work in a partnership with us. And I think we'll solve that issue.
Okay, great. We have time.
If I could add to the question about the officer friendly, we are anxiously waiting to get back into the schools. We put together several hundred officers who are willing to go back to the schools this year. Over the last two years, we really invested into it. Obviously COVID took us out of the schools, but we're looking forward to that, um, and moving forward.
Very great. Thank you so much.
We have, we have about three more minutes of questions and then we want to turn it over to Alderman Mitz and with our next steps and, and just give some closing comments to the superintendent and the deputy chief and our elected officials.
Okay. One more question. What is the plan to bridge the gap between the police and the youth to allow them to feel more comfortable with not only helping the police and investigations, but also wanting them to be around in the community?
So, so let me start off and then I know the boss might want to jump in here. We can't emphasize enough the, the need for us to continue to engage young people at the youngest possible point, whether that is through sports. Also, we are expanding within to the arts. You keep hearing us talk about PALS because it is clearly identified to not only us, but to the community that engaging, uh, young people is absolutely key to building that trust. And we look forward to doing that. Going, going forward, uh, he got logged off, so he's going to try to join us again. Uh, going forward, just like the deputy mentioned with his Sergeant Harris and the West Side Sport Collaborative, you also have in our districts where you're employing new, uh, we're hiring right now youth coordinating, uh, youth coordinators throughout the city. Um, so these are methods in which we're reaching back and making sure we make those connections with the young people, including our white, white acts, our youth district advisory councils. Boss, are you back with us?
Go ahead. Yeah, I'm good.
Director, Director Brooks, you want to take us back over to the superintendent, please?
Nah, I don't, I don't have any further comment, Reverend Jones.
Okay. So, uh, uh, any other questions that we can, we will respond to the day after now, we can respond back and send those over to the soup and director, uh, uh, ladies, are there any other questions?
Um, we'll get them all together, prepare and send them over to you.
So Superintendent and, uh, Deputy Chief and our Deputy Director, uh, Cato, we'll, we'll compile all of the questions, send you a copy of this link and also a link from, uh, Can TV. Uh, and then we, you all will have a copy of all of this information of being transcribed and recorded. So, but as we, as we yield now for this meeting, we want to just go to our next steps, our next step being, and then we're going to turn it over to Alderman Mitz. Our next step Superintendent, if you will allow us, is to hold with you, if that's okay. The next meeting will be an in-person meeting, possibly August the twenty third, if your schedule will allow. A super, a meeting from the community with the superintendent and your designate. And also to keep on with, with, uh, you and, uh, the deputy chief and, uh, Director Brooks share about ongoing transparency and community involvement. And of course, last but not least, we would like to, to, for you to, to take on this initiative that we're working on now as a pilot initiative for the city of Chicago to show how the community and the police can work together, not just talk about it, but actually get back on the ground and put the boots on the ground. And of all of us are collaboratively working together. So the first thing I guess, uh, Superintendent, would you be open to a quarterly meeting with this robust group of elected, uh, elected officials and leaders?
Yes, without question. I'd love to. Can't wait to, we can meet in person. I've had both, uh, doses of the vaccine, of the Pfizer vaccine, so I'm good to go right now. And I know, I know it's a hit and miss depending on where you are, whether you've had the vaccine. But as, as soon as we can meet in person, I think the stronger our relationship can, can be.
Superintendent, we just say it then, won't you tell the folks that it's okay to get vaccinated, sir?
Yes. So it's okay to get vaccinated. The first shot I had of the Pfizer vaccine, no, no issues. The second shot, I had a little pain, took some Advil and I was good to go. Uh, so I'm sixty years old. So it's okay to get vaccinated and I feel, uh, much more comfortable moving around having both doses of the vaccine. And, and I'll, so will you.
Yes, you would because I'm, I'm vaccinated too and I'm ready to go. I'm ready to get out here, believe me. And I was out here on Saturday and it felt good.
Yes.
So Superintendent, so we got eight twenty-three scheduled, uh, and we, it's the evening meeting. We're going to check in with, of course, Director, uh, Brooks and Deputy Chief Cato to make sure, and Officer Hall to make sure that your calendar is okay for. But we want to bring it back and we want to bring it back with some of the same concerns, not necessarily the same topics. But we're talking about the issues of the day as it relates to where we're going and what we're doing. But we will also follow up, uh, with your designate to make sure that we have the community involved as well as, uh, the police, so we can all collaboratively work together with the DCOs, the captain, the deck and all of that good stuff. So we know, just not talking, but actually working together. And that's what this group is about, sir. We're about working together to bring about, uh, solutions and collaborative ideas that we can make a change in the community. And we're hoping that that's okay with you if we continue in that, in that, down that, that path with your support and your leadership.
Uh, I'm looking forward to it, Reverend. I'm, you, you guys, at first I said I'm adopted, but now I'm your cousin from the South. So I'm, I'm here until you tell me to go back.
Is that, uh, 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 Superintendent, can you say that again? You, you broke up.
Oh, I said, I felt adopted for the last several months, but now you're making me feel like I'm your cousin from the South. So I'm, I'm here with you. I'm a family member. So I can't wait till we meet in person.
So, so that you know I'm south, okay? I love me some south. So you know, so anyway, we do this, uh, uh, Alderman Mitz, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Thank you, Reverend Jones.
We, we yield to you, Madam Chair.
Thank, can Reverend Jones?
Yeah, we, we here, Madam Chair. Go ahead, please.
Thank you. I'm in a, uh, in, in a rural area. Um, I have an emergency, so I went out of town uh, to take care of that and I'm kind of traveling. So I just want, I heard part of, uh, the, um, the meeting, but the meeting was so important that I even tried, just tried to get on even while you're traveling. I want to thank our superintendent and the First Deputy Cato, Reverend Jones, I, and all of, uh, constituents and members who are working hard to, uh, reduce the virus and, uh, try to save our children's life, um, even with being out. And I heard the, the numbers of forty-eight, uh, being shot over the weekend. Tells us that we need to, every, all hands on deck, if I would say, that we need to really do all we can to try to, uh, save our children, save ourselves, uh, even with being vaccinated. Uh, people are, are still dying, uh, the virus not going anywhere. And, um, we need to just love on each other. Let's try to change this dynamic of people's being killed on a like daily basis, every weekend. And young people is, uh, I noticed most of the conversation was around our young youth and having conversation with them, uh, as well as the parent. Uh, I think that they both go hand in hand together. Uh, I do believe that we need to talk about trauma because, uh, uh, as we continue to have the one who pass away, the trauma is embedded and we need to work with those issues so that, uh, they can find their way back to society and know there's a purpose and there's hope still for them, uh, as they were here on this earth. So I, I am just, uh, thankful that, that we have this, uh, meeting so that everyone can know that we are together. Uh, I think, uh, the West Side still stands as the best side. Want some love, we want to make sure that you can get it from our community. Uh, and trying to provide people with these necessities and essential, uh, services that they need. Uh, a lot of time people don't know, uh, where they can get these, uh, different services from. They don't know what's out there. And I guess we need to share, share information and share it more often so that we can, uh, help save lives, help someone. Uh, sometimes those things are more than what, as they said, money can buy, uh, kind words and fifty people's spirit. Uh, as we coming out of the pandemic, a lot of people are still, uh, are being traumatized by all of it, don't know that the world have changed. And we won't, we will not be going back to that same world again. Everything changing, business changing. So we need to step it up and get with the change. And, um, that is not taking a life. So, uh, finding opportunities for jobs, for them to work, uh, those who want to be employed. Uh, we know that the jobs are there and we know that, um, as we continue to move forward, we are looking to make sure that the wages are there as well for people who are trying to go back to work. So, uh, I just want to thank all of you and thanks for the comments. Uh, that's what makes up this world, all of us. So thank you, Reverend Jones, for this opportunity to have allowed me to speak to you. And I'm praying for myself and my family.
We, we're definitely in prayer for you, the woman and, uh, per the conversations we've been having with you since we've been having those other meetings uh, in the past, um, and you along with some of the other elected officials under your stewardship have said that we need to come together and continue to have these robust conversations under, of course, your, your leadership, along with your leadership, Congressman, uh, and the other Alderman, Jason Irving, Tala Pharoah, Walter Barnett and others. So we're doing just what you requested of us to do and we're going to stay the course. And we got what you asked us to do. We're going to keep it out here. We're going to keep these relationships building. So again, we thank you. Please be safe out there. We're praying for you and your family. And thank you for allowing us to continue to, to, to keep the work going forward with the staff that you help us with. And also with the support that you continuously bring to this West Side, the white elected officials and other groups that you've been working with. So if there's no other comment, we'd like to get a closing comment from a superintendent, closing comment from the deputy. And then we're going to have Brother Andre, uh, uh, Chapin to pray us out. Uh, Superintendent, closing comments, you and the deputy.
Yeah, I'd just like to say Reverend Jones, thank you for your moderating. What an excellent job you did, bringing all of the tough questions to the forefront. Uh, and Alderman Mitz, thank you so much for, uh, your time in organizing this group and praying for you and your family, Alderman Mitz. The same to Alderman Tala Pharoah, uh, I think Alderman Irvin was on as well as Alderman Burnett. And I don't think I missed anyone. So thank you all so much for your time this evening. And I'm looking forward to meeting you all in person and establishing a strong relationship on the West Side. I am looking forward to it. I can't wait to meet you all. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Deputy Chief Cato and then Deputy, uh, Director Brooks, please. Deputy Chief?
I just kind of want to add to Ray, I want to thank each, I've been very fortunate to be, uh, to work here on the West Side of Chicago. I've had great support from Alderman Mitz, Alderman Tala Pharoah, Alderman Irving, Alderman Burnett. And, and I tell you, the clergy has actually circled the wagon around a lot of the, a lot of the causes here in the area. Uh, Reverend Jones, thank you again for putting this together. You know, I was a little nervous about this town hall meeting, but as usual, you all tend to make me feel like family, but I was, but, uh, but, but we're here now and we're actually doing it. So God bless all of you. Thank you for putting this together.
Well, we are family and, 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 you know, to get united, we stand, divided, we fall. When, when a family prays together, we stay together. Director Brooks?
Hey, I, I just want to just highlight again, you guys have an excellent team out there. With Commander McKenzie, with Commander Wines, Commander, uh, Gil Calderon. You have some spectacular, uh, caps off is, I can't tell you how blessed you are to have both Belta and Tim Brown, who work twenty-four hours for y'all. I, I, and, and not to mention the excellent leadership and the Alderman. Uh, again, as we go in this summer and we're starting to get out in the streets, as, as Deputy Cato mentioned, it's important that we all come together and meet out on those streets. So we look forward to seeing you out on the streets this summer and we'll see you soon. Um, again, my partner here and Commander Navalas, uh, is looking forward to continue working out there. You know, he, he, he raised him out there on the West Side. He was a lieutenant out there. So, you know, we're all looking to come back.
Okay. So since you just brought Mitch's name, let him have a close comment, sir.
Yeah, thank you very much. It, it was an honor to be here once again. The folks on the West Side have always been very, very good to me. And I got to give a shout out to Chief Cato because, uh, everything I, I learned, I learned from him. And he's a tough guy to keep up with. Uh, Alderman Mitz, she's always been very welcoming. Thank you very much. Uh, Alderman Tala Pharoah, man, you've always been there and, and the clergy out there. So I'm looking forward to working with every single one of you. Me and Glenn here, you guys are going to run us ragged and we're, we're looking forward to it. Also, please, uh, engage the community policing office. Use the hell out of those DCOs out there. They are there to service you and that's what we expect of them. And thank you very much. And, uh, you know, we'll be looking forward to seeing you guys.
Okay. Commander, Commander McKenzie or Commander Wines, if you're there, any closing comments for me, please?
Madam McKenzie, I just want to reiterate what everyone has said. It's a pleasure and an honor to, uh, be on this call and to actually work in here.
You broke up, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, sir. Yes.
I would say it's a pleasure and an honor to be the commander of the eleventh district. Um, I, um, I have Deputy Chief Cato as a mentor to show me how things are done on the West Side here in Chicago, being the South Side of myself. But since I've been here, I've embraced the, the West Side and it's now my home. So I appreciate the love that I've received being here on the West Side and the, uh, collaboration with the community that we've, uh, developed in the eleventh district with the community right now. So my goal is to make sure that we bridge all divides and bridge all gaps so that we can work together as a team and keep everything moving forward. So I thank you all.
Thank you, sir. First Deputy, you would see you there. Would you like to say anything, sir?
Just happy to be here and be a part. Uh, it's been quite a while since I've been policing on the West Side. Uh, from when I was, uh, the deputy chief over the narcotics bureau as well as a sergeant lieutenant there. Um, I am very familiar with the West Side of Chicago. Uh, most of my time was spent in the fourth and sixth districts on the South Side. But, uh, my time in narcotics, which is about fifteen years, I was out of Home and Square. And I do appreciate all the support that you all gave us over at Home and Square, standing by us for being there. Alderman, uh, Irvin, as well as Alderman Scott, who helped support us while we're there. But if there's anything that we can do as a department, uh, as has been stated here, um, Deputy Chief Cato has our full support, uh, as well as Commander McKenzie. And if there's anything we can, uh, do, please let them know and they'll definitely get it up to us. And we will give them every resource we possibly have at our disposal. Once again, thank you all for all your support.
Thank you, First Deputy. I don't want to miss Commander Wines if she's still on. If Commander Wines there or any commanders that's there that we missed, we don't want to miss anyone. Do we, do we have anyone from ten, eleven, fifteen? Uh, we got eleven and. Do we have anyone from ten, eleven, fifteen? We got eleven. Any from fifteen or twenty-five? Anyone from twenty-five? Sergeant Lewis?
I think they had to step off.
Okay, so with that being said, we have, we have only, we only came quick past three minutes. So now we're going to pray out with Andre, Brother Andre, are you there, sir?
Let's pray. Father God, we bless you for your goodness and your grace. Father God, we pray a covering over Superintendent Brown, a covering over Director Brooks, your covering and your angels over Deputy Cato, over Angel Navalas, Lord. And Father God, over the First Deputy, we pray your covering and your angels around them. Father God, as I think about the seven hundred and ninety-nine paragraphs and the one hundred and fifty or more deadlines for the consent decree, Lord, that's a lot to go through. It's a lot of mental work. And so I'm praying for the mental health of our police department, that you would put your angels around them, give them wisdom, how to bring this thing together, how to bring our community together. Let us be one with you, and let us be one with each other. And Lord, these blessings we pray, we pray a covering over our community and the work that we're going to do to build our community up. And these blessings we pray, we pray in Jesus's name, amen.
So we thank you all for your patience and for your time. We only went over about five minutes, but we thank you so very much. This has been a meaningful, inspiring group, and we thank all of you all individually and collectively. God bless you all, all of our elected officials, all of our public service officers, all of those folks who are laboring and the community. God bless you. We love you, and we'll talk to you soon. Please have a blessed evening, and remember, we are the change we need to see in our community. Love on each other, forgive each other, and let's support each other, and let's make things happen. We thank all of the support team that have come together to make this happen. Elise, Marietta, Andre, Nikki, Alderman Mitz, Congressman Davis, Alderman Talaferro, Alderman Irving, all of Walter Barnett, all of Emma Mitz, Andre, all of you guys, those I know and those that I don't know. God bless you. God keep you. And let's talk real soon, and we'll talk on the other side. God bless you. Go in peace. Love you all.